Around and you can see what's going on. I'm happy to do that as well, in case you don't trust what I'm doing. So, I will call this meeting to order Thursday, August 27th, 2020. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th orders for spending certain provisions of the open meeting law, and the governor's March 15th order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in a place, this meeting at the town of Adams Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of public will be permitted, and every effort has been made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. And just to remind everyone, this is being recorded, and we are using Zoom platform to record the meeting. So if anyone did want a copy of this meeting following today, I can make that available. There is nobody on the call virtually. If people enter, I will let you know. So this is everybody who's in the meeting room. The first order of business that's on the agenda is the approval of minutes for July 29th, 2020. All of us who are present are able to vote on the minutes.
We waive the reading of minutes and approval as provided for July 29th.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Since there's nobody remote, all in favor? Aye. All right. So under new business, review of the temporary moratorium on tag sales and permit fees. Building Commissioner Garner has supplied everyone with a letter in your package, respectfully requesting that the Board of Selectmen consider lifting the moratorium on tag sales in the town of Adams. It's my understanding from talking to Jerry that it's ourselves in North Adams who are the last community standing in Berkshire County, having the moratorium. Back in July, I think it was July 3rd, the governor lifted the ban on tag sales, allowing for them throughout the Commonwealth. So we've taken up this issue before. I know that there was quite a bit of mail that the town received about why we were banning tag sales when retail was open. The church had some stuff going on. There's a couple of different things happening in town in why we're tag sales being, I guess, held differently, or held through different standards. In talking with the building commissioner, he's put forward some information here in the letter that would state that those who are getting a permit would have to comply with the COVID-19 control plan, which Deb has provided an updated copy that it is to fight, that people would have to adhere to. The other item, why I thought it was important for us to have a conversation about it, is most tag sales are happening on the weekend, which means that enforcement of this moratorium would have to be taking place on the weekend. And our co-enforcement officer, our building commissioners, they don't work on the weekends.
Well, it's not just that, but we're living here.
You're living here, right. So it is extra hours, it could be overtime costs applied to the town, et cetera, the longer we continue. And Jerry, I don't know if you wanted to say a few things, I just wanted to at least indicate why it's on me.
Yeah, I mean, I did a survey, I called up all the neighboring communities about this tag sale item, and the only other community that seems to be doing it, all the way out to Richmond, is North Adams. And even North Adams said that they put the order out there, but that's about it. I mean, they're not going out looking for this. So, I mean, we're the, you know, we're coming into town and so forth, but I mean, it's like, this is something that's no different than if you go to Market 32 and you're picking up produce. You're amongst all these people in the produce aisle, and I don't know if you have noticed or not, but I definitely have noticed, you get the person that sits there and squeezes every peach that's in that bin. And then you come up behind them, and then somebody else is grabbing them, and they take six, and then you're grabbing them. So there's no difference between that and the tag sale. And plus, if they use these control plans, and this is what Ed Beatty uses, and he does numerous communities throughout the Commonwealth. If you use this control plan like they ask you to do, they fill this out, and if they abide by this control plan, there should be no problem. It would be no different than going to Walmart, Adams Market, Market 32, it's the same thing. One of the arguments was that there's going to be people coming in from the outside, like from New York State, New Jersey. I have that right in Market 32. Look at all the places. You got Florida, you got South Carolina, you got, I mean, there's people coming in from all over the place. So I don't think that's an argument for tag sales. Most of the people that do these tag sales are from the neighboring towns. They come in and they do these tag sales. So there's, I just don't think there's an argument for us to stop tag sales from happening, although it is almost September.
I'll open it up for any questions, but Jerry?
I have no questions, but I'll just make a comment. It needs to make sense if all the other communities are doing so. But the only concern I have now is there's, if, once we do lift it, there's going to be a glut of tag sales, because everybody's going to want to catch up and make sure, you know, I give my time with my tag sales. So that may in itself cause some extenuating problems with traffic and that type of thing, because when we have the August townwide tag sale, it's like free for all. And as soon as we lift it, which I will vote for, but there's going to be a rash of tag sales, and that may cause some problems with it itself.
Well, just for, anything that we do after this moment event, if we open up anything, I don't care if it's a movie theater, it's going to be packed.
Yeah, but I mean, that's control, more control if you're in a movie theater, and then they have the right to put a certain number of people in and that type of thing. But if you open up a tag sale, I mean, everybody and anybody can go to it.
But I find that to be untrue also, because there's a document on the door of Walmart. It says 55 people in the store at any one time.
Yeah.
And there's one in Pittsfield, I think it says 45. I went in there, counted people at the register, there was over 45 people at the register, and the store was full. Who's controlling that?
Well, when I, this is going to office subject, when I went to Walmart, I don't know how precise it is, like go there now and then, there was a gentleman, you know, with a tablet, he was marking, and when people left, he'd subtract of that, so.
Let's start counting.
Yeah. I think, to Joe's point, for me, it's, people are going to be, people are going to want to do that. I think the biggest burden for us is going to be, are they permitted to do it? And then, number two, the signage issue, because I too am concerned about the signage issue, although I feel as though the last time around, a couple of weeks ago, we discussed it, I feel as though that's, we have a good plan. So there's still going to be a burden on you.
Oh, yeah.
You know, for sure. But I think it's a little bit easier to control if we get the word out, say, fine, this is, you know, this is, the moratorium's lifted, but we have a new permit fee, and we also have a new permit application process. And then if we know the tag sale's not permitted, that still now requires a visit to say hello.
But we do that anyways.
Because we know we're permitted.
Yeah, we do that anyways, but by having the people come in and actually apply, right now, they're just going rogue, because they know they can't do it. So they're just popping signs. If I saw, I got a big sign in the back of my truck that was on the McKinley statue, it was horrendous. I pulled it out and put it in the back of my truck. I mean, they're trying to get people to go there, they put them on there on Friday afternoons before they're out around.
Yeah.
And they do that. So I come around on Friday night, or I come around Saturday morning, and I'm looking for this. Then I go to the site, I see what's going on, and then I send them a letter. And, you know, and I'm being good about it and saying, next time this happens, you're going to get a ticket, you're going to get a fine. But, on the other hand, if we open this, maybe people will come in and apply, and actually do some of these things that we're asking them to do.
And again, the new permit application with the information about the signs, Joe had mentioned, putting so many days that the signs could be up and that they had to be down, because I understand that was on that application. Jay had mentioned an increase in the permit fee, that is, the second request that's in Jerry's letter, here, asking the board to consider an increase in the permit fee, from the now $2 fee to a $7 permit fee per event. Is that correct?
Correct.
So there's two items for the board to take up tonight. One is to determine whether or not we're going to allow tag sales to be back to the place, and then two, if we wanted to raise the permit fee.
And the reason why I'm raising the permit fee is because Mark is also doing this for COVID control. And, I mean, $2 is, I mean, we have to do a lot of updating in town anyways, but $2 is far too low for what we're doing. So if he has to come out, at least if it's $7, if he spends a dollar, I mean, now we're here in the town, it may offset some of that cost. But I know, Mary, it never will offset.
But it might, it might try a little bit to offset the cost.
Um, I'll, oh, do you have something to say, ma'am?
Yeah, I was going to say, basically, I think, at least on my part, the moratorium was put in place at the recommendation of your office. So, if your office is recommending removing the moratorium, I'm here to fire it.
Actually, I initiated to remove it before, but it, Mark came up and, I think he actually went reverse.
I think he was.
Yeah, well, his comments was about zero. Right now, we're at zero. It's like, well, zero's a good number. But, and I think there's going to be imports, not necessarily imports, because, like you said, they've been having them anyway.
Yeah, they've been having them, some of them don't put up signs that I found, others put up signs, so I can trace them down, others just say "tag sale," and they're on the internet directing people to follow those signs. And then when they get to a certain point, then they say "tag sale." So, you know, there's multiple ways to have those tag sales, and driving around town all day on a Saturday is not much fun, trying to fight tag sales.
And my last point, starts with increase. I would be fine with that, I would motion what to take effect in January. I mean, this year, it's pretty much shot, so.
Yay, 2020.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, let's take up the first item.
I'll make a motion to rescind our moratorium on tag sales and to allow them to go forth predicated on the application and what is asked of them on the application.
Okay, I have a motion by Joe.
That's right.
I have a second by Rick. Is there any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that is unanimous. Did you want to make a motion on that?
Sure, I'm making a motion, you raise the fee from $2 to $7 by January 1, 2021.
Okay, I have a motion by Rick.
Her.
Her event, sorry. If you could modify your motion to say that it would be $7 per tag sale.
Okay. Someone modified.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
I think from 2 to 7 is a little bit gouging for people. I was thinking like $5, and then, you know, go incrementally next year with that. That's just my thinking. And another question I have, there's a lot of tag sales that are family tag sales, that families get together, so they're different people. Would that mean each family would have a $5, or a $7 should be voted?
It's per tag sale.
Per tag sale.
But, right now, it's currently $2 for the first one, $5 for the second one. So after that, it's $5 incrementally. So if you go in $7, it's not really going to, it's not really going to affect it, because if they have a, first they have one, and then they have one the following weekend, $7 anyways.
Yeah, well, the thing is, is that, you know, you're, generally, people that have tag sales, and this isn't always true, because I've seen people, well, do have a tag sale, they just want to get rid of things, but mainly, it's kind of about low-income people, because that's a way for them to make some money, and I guess, I'll second your motion, but I would rather, I'll second your motion for discussion. If we're going to have that, I'd like to see it go in effect immediately, because that way we can make a little revenue. That's my thinking. Effective January 1st, there's usually no tag sales in winter times, that I know of, unless maybe during the side, but if we're going to do it, I think that we should do it right away, so people are used to it when times roll around next tag sale season.
What could be compromised with a, maybe an increase from $2 to $5, and make that effective immediately? Would you be comfortable with that?
$7 in January.
And then you want to do $7 in January, or would you want to blend in $7 until the next fee structure next year, which would be, I think it's seven. No, I think we started for July 1, right? Are all the fees, when do your fees, what is the fee structure?
Well, that would, that would start immediately. So, it's up to you how you want to.
Well, fee structures, well, fee structures for tag sales can be put in at any time.
I think you.
Yeah, because that's not.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
It's your.
Right, that's at our discretion, right.
So, you would want to go to 7, January 1?
Yeah, I mean, the whole idea here is trying not to lose so much money. If it's costing us money, do the, do it the right way.
Then why are you waiting to implement it in January?
Because this year's shock.
Not, not really. I mean, why is it shock? People can have tag sales till the snow flies.
A lot of people have tag sales this time of year.
Yeah, right.
They're dumping their houses out.
Yeah.
Before winter, they're getting rid of everything.
All right, changes from here to there.
Okay. You go to 7?
Yeah.
Okay. And you'll still second that motion?
Changing it immediately to 7? Yeah, I don't want to go on and on. Yes, I'll second that.
Okay. So the motion is to increase the permit fee for tag sales, per tag sale, from $2 to a $7 permit fee, effective immediately. Do I have that correct? And I have the motion with a second. Okay. Any more discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. Okay. Thank you. Jerry, thank you.
Thank you.
Do not speed on your way to Plainfield.
What are you doing?
I try to slow.
Do you, Jerry, are you subcontracted to do Plainfield as an inspector?
Yes. And they asked me to go up there tonight, because they've got an issue with one of their buildings, and then I got to go to a meeting with my sweatboard, so.
Okay, well, luck.
Luck for the night.
See, Jerry, thank you.
Okay. So then that brings us to the budget process. And Jay, would you like to go ahead with an overview? I know that you sent an email on Tuesday with an overview, but maybe you want to.
Sure, I can set the stage for everybody. So, as you all know, the state came through and said you can depend as a political subdivision of the Commonwealth, that you can use the fiscal year 20 cherry sheet state aid numbers. So we were able to budget using that number, and I have to flip through my book, but I believe that is $2,704,831, I believe.
300,000.
Thank you. Oh, not bad for.
Not bad.
So that is the number that we are using. What does that mean in dollars and cents? So that means that Mary and I had to go back and look in the budget and try to find approximately $68,000 reductions, based on what we had built the fiscal 21 budget around. That's a far better number to work with than what we were anticipating, which could have been well into six figures, about $250,000, give or take. So we lucked out, but we still had to take this seriously and look at it, and try to make some very strategic surgical reductions in the budget in order to meet that goal. So today, we're going to go over the sections of the budget, and just kind of give you a brief overview of what we did, for your approval. We exceeded our target goal of $68,000 by about $18,000. Why? We felt that was needed to give us a little bit of a bumper, in case our receipts, on the receipt side, drops, or for some reason the state did decide to come back and reduce it further. It just gives us a little bit more of a cushion. So, personal services, we're now about $6,406,000, that's a 2.73 increase. None of this has really changed, although it doesn't affect the tax rate. I'll call your attention to page four, the capital. We had a pretty hefty capital list this year, anchored mostly by the sewer work, that's not covered by the federal or state funds for commercial street. So that is still in, but we were able to reduce it a little bit more. So now our capital outlay is only $413,000. So we're going to be putting in, Mary, what did we say, about another $400,000 into free cash? My brain's starting to get wrong.
You mean what we're leaving there?
Yeah, what we're leaving inside free cash.
All right. It's $299,176.
Thank you. So we were able to turn that down a little bit. Why did we want to do that? We wanted to make sure we had a pretty sharp capital, discretionary capital outlay list, because that doesn't impact free cash. If we're able to conserve our free cash this year, we're able to put it into the ongoing balance of free cash, and if we have to, we can use it fiscal '22 for a variety of authorized purposes. I'm also fairly proud to say we were able to achieve these cuts without having to dig into the stabilization fund at all.
Fair, fair.
And we're able to leave that intact, again, for fiscal '22, which we're not yet sure what's going to bring with that. So what did we do here in the budget? For the most part, the budget has remained the same. We haven't made a significant bunch of changes. We were able to use a variety of tools in order to achieve these savings that you'll see in a variety of these sections within the budget. For example, just taking them out of order, the police department, we had some significant retirements, these folks who retired or towards the upper echelon of the pay scale, we've achieved some savings that way. And by hiring junior officers, we were able to achieve some savings to keep the headcount where we wanted it to be, without having to decimate the headcount of the co-headmaster.
And we could have never anticipated this fully during the budget in March for a June meeting. We're just lucky now that it's right there to be added.
The other thing that we were able to achieve is, as you know, I made the painful decision back, I want to say sometime in March, of furloughing staff. What effect now did that have on us fiscally? We were able to achieve some savings in fiscal '20, not knowing what the receipts would be last quarter of fiscal '20, so we were able to achieve some savings there. That will reflect when we close the fiscal '20 books. It means effective July 1, and while we've been moving into fiscal '21, we've been able to achieve some savings on our labor costs. So that, we've saved some money initially upfront. The tool that Mary and I had to decide to use was, if we put the line items at 100% salaries, if we were paying these folks their full salaries for 12 months, that's the normal pay cycle, we would still have to raise that amount of money on the tax rate, wouldn't necessarily show savings until the books were closed in fiscal '21, and that amount of money not spent would show up in free cash. So what we did for particularly library, council on aging, a couple of the other departments, we reduced the amount of hours that these folks worked. So what we have to remember is in fiscal '22, to bring those back up to what they would be, but this is the only way to achieve the savings now. Mary, was there anything you wanted to explain about that?
Well, it's just, it's almost a reverse of fiscal '20, because now we know the savings we had, by appropriated, when we need to cut the budget, we're just cutting what we're not spending. It was kind of a lock for us, yep.
On page 88, under operating expenses, we carry $140,000 a year on our electricity lineup. We've been very lucky, we've had some beautiful sun, we've earned a lot of electricity credits on our solar field up by the East Road Station, and we've been applying those credits to, we've been applying those credits to some of our larger electric accounts, in particular the three electric accounts at wastewater.
Oh, is that why it's not there? Or is it not awarded? So if you have that first section, if we have the first section of all the Roman numerals, it's right behind it. It's before personnel services. So it's before page one, between Roman numerals and page one. It's not. In any case, it's only a $10,000 reduction in the power, but what the National Credit allowed us to do back in September. Joe, do you have it?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah. Was, we had, ended up, we had a great summer last summer, because we killed all the hogweed.
Poisonous hogweed.
Okay. Poisonous hogweed. And we have phenomenal, we haven't had a summer like that in years, solar wise. We ended up with a huge credit at the wastewater treatment plant, and they allowed me to take that credit, and I put about a year's worth of power on almost every bill we have, so we shouldn't be paying that much power for fiscal '21 at all. So another place we could cut some money, so we took $10,000 out of that.
And if you, you know, look at the numbers, how we did that, we actually expended $124,200 in 2019. 2020, we were about $108,000 before we, while we ran these numbers. We originally budgeted $140,000. So Mary and I felt if we took 10, we'd still be within a comfort zone.
Right. Because the credits didn't take effect till the December bills, they paid so much to do everything, that's electric. And so we only paid like half a year of power on numerous bills, so I think we'll see some more savings this year. I mean, why have a big credit here and pay money out here? Also, you know, we paid the S-Rex to the solar company out of that account also, okay? Their quarter of solar.
So we were able to do that. The other place that we went, and again, I apologize, I know I'm taking this out of order, but I'm trying to hit the different techniques that we use to do this. Council on Aging, pages 71, 72, we've been operating with four part-time van drivers in the Council on Aging. In my year and a half that I've been here, Mary, we must have hired, how many?
Six.
Six van drivers. We don't have the retention issue, we have a retention issue with that, as well as some other operational. So in speaking with Erica, what we decided to try is hire one full-time van driver, 35 hours a week, with benefits. We have increased the per diem van driver line item. That, the line item used to be called substitute drivers, we've changed that to per diem. We increased it from $3,000 to $6,000, so Erica can use those drivers to surge when needed. We feel that that's going to cover her, coverage pretty well. We'll keep the second van, and if we have to look at this again, we will, but by doing so, we saved approximately $22,000 by doing that, give or take. And that way there, we feel as though we'll be able to hire one vested, invested employee, not unlike we had in the past, and this will provide some stability, it'll also provide pretty broad coverage. In conjunction with that, I had a conversation with BRTA, and we have yet to solidify this, but they have a program called Root Optimizer, or Root Schedular. And what that will do is, with proper data input, it will actually give you an efficient root model to operate. So we feel as though, let's see if we can, with some more tailored management, and more stable labor pool over there, we'll be able to achieve some efficient savings.
Also, we're going to dictate what days the van goes where through this optimization program, and we're, people will be told, you don't just call up and say, I've got an appointment on Friday at 3:00. You may make appointments in North Adams on this day, Pittsfield on this day, and so on. Other Health on Aging vans and services like this have rules like that, so that they, the van goes to North Adams on Tuesday, goes to Pittsfield on Thursday, period. There isn't this back and forth and running about thing, and it should make it easier to run it with one van, but that's why we're going to keep the second van with the per diem drivers, just to make sure everybody's covered until everybody gets used to it.
May I just ask a quick question on that? I think that's a great idea, but as far as the scheduling, so, the people, it will be a year schedule, so that people know, you know, where they're going, instead of.
Yes, every Wednesday, we go to Adams, phone, tell them.
So it's going to stay consistent throughout the whole year. That's the, that's the goal.
That's the hope.
Yeah.
That's the hope.
Because that would be the only way it would work, you know, because if you kept on changing it weekly or so, people couldn't get their appointment setting the way they'd want, because they won't show anything. As long as you take a system, that's an good idea.
Just to show you the bottom line on that, we had budgeted $225,835 under that previous structure. That's now dropped to $217,20. And again, you know, if it doesn't work, that's fine, we'll go back at it, but Erica is willing to try it, and I think with some, some more attention, some more management, we'll. That's now dropped to two seventeen, twenty. And again, you know, if it doesn't work, that's fine. We'll go back at it. But Erica is willing to try it and I think with some more attention, some more management, we'll, and again, I think for me, the goal is to let's hire the right person for that job. That job feeds a lot of people. It's an important service and it's hard to recruit part-time off van drivers.
I heard a phone. I said, where's that phone coming from? Mary. Don't you get me food out of the fridge?
Oh, I didn't know you were, where it was coming from.
Our nice new, I should call that galley?
Sure.
It's not really a vertical.
Nope.
And the last piece to this, there's been some built-in savings. For example, we...
Library.
Library, correct. Right, library. We've had...
None of the part-timers are working, so we're realizing that savings in this budget.
We also had two full-time people that have been working part-time. We'll restore them up to full-time status probably October after the budget is passed. But Holly's really been gracious in not pushing us too hard to bring people back. So we're achieving some savings there. What does that do? That actually saves one of the positions. We hired that library page position. That was on the cutting option list, reduction list. But by keeping everybody furloughed until the library really does go back to full service where they're needed, we were able to save that position. So as you can see, we've been maybe not dodging, but we've certainly been strategic.
Dodging a few bullets. Also, Holly had given all half of her book money towards having this page last year and she is taking another half of that. So it was $10,000 she gave back and now she's giving back another five in hopes to restore her book money to the full amount it was in 2019 when she does her budget for twenty-two.
Two, right. So we didn't, we didn't want to, that was working out well. She lives up to her side of it. We wanted to live up to our side of it. And also, as you know, the library receives the state funding assistance. If we cut that, if we reduce that, the state's going to say, are you doing that proportionally to other departments? So we really didn't want to go down that route. We just have to, we avoided it. The last piece to this is the non-wage, elected non-wage stipends. We have fourteen elected officials that receive anywhere between $300 to $2,000 per year for a grand total budgetary impact of $15,998. We took, that had been originally always on our cutting list, reduction list. So we took a look at that and we are proposing that we level fund all of the stipend positions to $300, Mary?
Yes.
Thank you. Three hundred with the chairman's receiving three fifty for this fiscal year. That can always be restored in the next budget, but we thought for this year, in order to try to make our goal, that's what we would try. Who and what do we have? The selectmen receive that stipend, as you know. Our board of assessors receive a stipend. The registrar voters receive a stipend. The board of health receives stipends. The cemetery commission also receives stipends as well. So all of those individual boards and commissions, we're proposing in this budget. And if you look, you can see the detail on those individual numbers, excuse me, budget chapters as to what the reductions are. What else, Mary, do we want to? Oh, yeah, I guess we also are going to look at what other communities pay for those positions or if they even exist going down the road. But that was the last item, the last tool, I guess you could say, that we used in order to reduce the budget. Did I miss anything, Mary?
No, I think you got it.
I've gone over it and I had enough.
So many times.
Yes. That concludes what we did here.
Yep.
It could have been a lot worse.
It could have been a lot worse.
No staff, no staff reductions, no service reduction.
Is it all right professionally?
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
What do we have left in our stabilization? It's hard for me to remember. Four ninety-nine, three seventy?
Other available funds that are spaced fourteen in the front of the budget.
Let me just, yep.
That's okay. Yep, four sixty-six, five seventy-six.
Four sixty-six, what?
Five seventy-six. We were close.
And we're taking some money out of free cash?
We always do, yeah.
Okay, so how much did we have and how much you're taking? I heard you say it, but I don't remember.
Yep, we've got nine hundred and sixty-three thousand, one twenty-six. We're taking two fifty for the, to offset the tax rate.
Yep.
And we're taking four thirteen, nine fifty for capital projects. It's your page fifteen.
Yeah. I really didn't get a chance to look at this because I just got it.
Oh, well, it's been in your budget since we handed the budget out once.
Yeah, right, but in the budget, but I mean, these updates and things.
Yeah.
And I didn't know when I came in what I'd be here.
Yep, it's, we're taking less out of it now.
Okay.
To leave a balance of two ninety-nine, one seventy-six.
Yep.
Yep.
Another thing too, you mentioned how good we're doing with our solar and you mentioned that nice sun in the summer, but as solar goes, the best generation time you get is in the winter because it's working harder. And a lot of times, if we have a heavy snow, a lot of our panels are covered with snow for not too long a time because the sun penetrates them pretty quick. But the ones that are low profiling we have, when the snow comes off of them, there's still a pile that, you know, is up above and that's where you're losing a lot because winter's the best generating time for solar. And that's why I have solar and after it snows, I've got a shovel, I mean, a ladder and I go up with a rake, you know, to get it off right away. And that's something I think we should look at more is the use of solar. We have a lot of town property. I know, you know, there's funding out there, maybe put another solar array somewhere, you know, on town property that would be advantageous for, you know, sun angle and, you know, all the parameters that make solar successful because I really think that, you know, a lot depends on what happens this election season about, you know, alternative energy sources. So there may be something that we could look at. Few other things is, we really missed a bow on this marijuana thing. As I mentioned, I ran for selectman and I was told, don't, don't talk about, you know, marijuana, you're going to lose. But I did anyways and I won. And we were the first community, I said this before, to, you know, get this out, you know, our past town administrator, you know, was really for it. And, you know, we got a lot of early hits, but, you know, here we are with, you know, promises that they're going to be coming in, you know, two separate ones. We haven't, you know, I'm sure maybe sometime it will materialize, but we've, we've lost a lot of money. Some of these communities that have marijuana, money's coming in, it's in the millions, you know. Yeah. Yeah. So that's another thing that I think we should kind of work on. And I was wondering, did we get a lottery money amount that? How much we got from the lottery?
We don't get the lottery anymore. They just lump it into the general government aid and give one amount.
So there's not a category for lottery sales? There used to be, right?
Oh, yeah. And then if they had a surplus, they'd give us that other big check in like September for the prior fiscal year. They stopped doing it.
So it's kind of a little bit quote hush money card sort of.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. And let's see, the last thing I got, we should have saved some money on fuel. Have we saved on fuel, like for trucks and, you know, oil?
Well, currently, we're probably experiencing some savings on fuel.
Yeah, because fuel has been...
Last winter, we locked in, you know, we locked in August, so we were paying a good price.
Oh, okay, so we locked in.
It was still a good price.
Yeah.
What was it? One eighty-nine-nine a gallon? But we only have one building running oil anymore, the library.
Well, I'm talking about fuel for all of our, you know, our police vehicles, our highway vehicles.
We're locking in at a much lower rate right now. I can't remember what it was.
But, you know, we should have made some savings on fuel costs.
Mm-hmm. So for the coming year, yes, we'll save on fuel costs.
Yeah. And the last thing I have, and I brought this up, is we could save money on our overtime in our municipality. I strongly believe that. And everybody's deserving of overtime because it's an essential thing in any town structure, overtime. I mean, it's needed for, you know, your winter plow and so on and so forth. But I just think, and I've said it publicly in front of town employees, I think there's a glut on overtime. I think a lot of people use that opportunity to, you know, put a little extra money in their pocket and, you know, which is okay, but I don't know how you stop it because I was very disappointed last year in the highway department because they, they spent all their overtime money in all the other communities in Brookshire County. Because I looked around, they were fortunate to have saved money from overtime and, you know, their highway department because the snow, you know, wasn't a bad snow year and that kind of thing. So that's just a concern of mine. I don't know how you approach it, what you do to change it. It's got to be a change in mentality. It's got to be a change in tactics. It's got to be changed perhaps in the equipments that's used by our DPW for dispersion of salt and other things because, you know, I just think they overuse salt. And I brought all this up, but I'm going to continue to, you know, harp at that vein because, you know, not just, I know public safety is the main domain of a selectman, but I'm also an environmentalist, believe it or not, after getting a cease and desist order, that, you know, a lot of that salt isn't good for, you know, the strains or it isn't good for people that have private water sources and, you know, I mean, that's a proven fact. You can get studies to validate that. So that's another thing, you know, financially, I think our town should keep a look at. And that's all I have.
So on that, Joe, your pleas are not falling on deaf ears, particularly with DPW police, which are frankly the two of the largest overtime generators.
Did you take those sheets I gave you or?
I did, I distributed them. Go ahead.
Okay.
The DPW, Mr. Tolbert has been looking into gently at my request and at some point will have a presentation when the time is right, but I believe his research will show that over a five-year trend of overtime in DPW is fairly steady. The number has stayed the same, to my knowledge, and I'm not the direct manager of the department. But the overtime is generated primarily by snow and ice control, which of course, mother nature somewhat dictates, a little bit of a crap shoot in terms of what time do they start, how long do they stay on? And callbacks for emergency purposes with minimum contractual required payout. That's pretty much the, the line in the, in the heart of it.
And the wastewater treatment plant, all the standby and the weekend duty is paid out of overtime and we have to keep wastewater treatment plant going.
Right, right. I, I said, essentials, of course.
Yeah, and that's the essential and I'm going to say that's got to be at least $12,000 over the year.
Yeah. We used to call that built-in overtime at the end.
Yes, and when we used to have all the budgets separated, that wastewater treatment plant standby was in its own budget and now it's all lumped into the DPW budget. So it might look inflated, but we still got to pay for the wastewater treatment plant to slow. And what I understand...
Well, I haven't seen, I haven't seen, you know, what you just gave to me, but the last two years were the most overtime that we, our DPW and police have done in quite a while, right? Am I correct in that assumption?
I didn't do an analysis on it. I, I did not, but...
But I worry...
Some years, the storm was all on the weekends.
Right, I know, that's true too, but on, on, you know, I worry if we get a shit kick in winter, you know, we haven't really had one. And if we get snow piled up the kazoo and these guys are out, which they're going to have to be, then we're really going to be, you know, in a budget crunch. And it just takes a bad winter, which we really need for water and things, but I don't know, it's just something that, you know, I'm a hardworking guy. I work hard. I never made much money at my jobs, but I did what I liked. And, you know, it's, a lot has to do with work ethic and your inside feel for, hey, I'm a town worker, I'm all for the town and, you know, think that way, you know, what you're doing each time you go out instead of plowing the fourth time up the road that you did three, call it then, you know? Because that, that's what bothers me because I'm out in the middle of the night shoveling. I see the guys, they all wait to me, I wait for them. There's no animosity between us that I know of perhaps in closed doors there might be. But, you know, I see guys, you know, they plow the road like four times, you know? And the last time they're going up and the blades hitting the blacktop, you know? And that's what I'm getting at, is possibly trying to just pad more money because that's, that's the town's big time to make overtime. So, you know, that's, that's all I'll say on that. You know, I said in public to the DPW guys, you were there, they weren't too happy with me, but I think they realized that, you know, they see me all the time working hard and I'm not going to pay for it. But that's all I have to say. But thanks, Mary, Jay.
Yes.
They seem to be reasonable cuts and they were done in a pretty good manner.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah.
Good with me? Bert, you got any questions?
Do you have questions for Mary before she leaves?
Okay. There's that.
Yeah, you answered all my questions on Tuesday.
I thought you had.
Mary, do you need me to call her personal?
No.
Okay.
We're good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Hi. Jim will be calling in. He did not have the Zoom link, so he's out in Jimbo. Hopefully, okay. He, I think will be calling in.
It's hard to know because you thought we were married.
Well, no, we talked about it, like about the team before we started and I told her we'd send him the link, but it's, the phone number is still there. So I think he'll be joining us momentarily, but we can go ahead and move forward. So we do need to take these, if you separate out the budget overview presentation, you'll get into kind of the areas of the budget. These are the updated pages for your binders. And we'll start with the personnel services. The first pages to look at would be the selectmen's budget, pages one and two. As Jay mentioned, he changes here would be reducing the stipends for the board of selectmen. And these were consistent with all of the boards and commissions, everybody being reduced down to $300 or $350.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm okay with it, but when I look at the other people that are getting stipends and amount of time I'm putting in as a selectman, you know, hour-wise and have my pittance of a salary or stipend lowered, I mean, that's a little extra money for me, you know? But I'll go for it. I mean, the other people, I mean, they're getting stipends going. I heard who is getting stipends, you know, the amount of time that they put into what they have to do compared to what I have to do as a selectman seems like, you know, why should I be hit, you know, for it? But I'm going to go for it because I'd look like the horse is ass if I said, oh, we shouldn't do that. So I'm going to, you know, go for it, but...
Well, and I don't know if it's, this is really for us to judge how much time other boards are putting in. I mean, we can look at the board of health is dealing with a pandemic and the amount of calls and webinars and all of the information they have to be dealing with.
Perhaps.
The assessors who have to go forward with all the training. We spend an awful lot of time about the assessor stipends during the budget sessions. They might argue that they also spend an awful lot of time as the, you know, I don't know much about the registrar voters and the cemetery commission. I'm not sure of the work they're doing. So when the conversation was to eliminate all of the stipends for the elected and appointed positions, the budget subcommittee actually pushed back and said that we didn't want to reduce them to zero completely because we don't know what the other communities are doing. We don't know the work that's being done and we just felt like that wasn't something that we should do this year is to reduce everyone to zero. Because it is a significant saving to, to reduce everything. I think it was $16,000.
Fifteen thousand, nine ninety-eight.
Nine, so I'm off by two dollars. So it was, that was a difficult conversation that we had. We have John who's already asked to not get a stipend as part of our initial budget conversations. I was in the same boat, but we couldn't make that decision for our entire board. So we went with the three and the three fifty as was proposed by, that was the compromise, really, that came back.
I was just going to say this and I'm saying it half facetiously or all facetiously, let me put it that way. Perhaps our town administrator should give back a little money for the community, you know, like $5,000 back out of the salaries or something like that, you know?
I...
That's just the way, you know, I think about, you know, a pay scale for, you know, I'm a retired guy, get a small pension and I have to work other jobs to get money, but, you know, that's here nor there. I'm just saying that facetiously, so, but, yeah, so it would take up, that's okay. So that's the first budget topic.
Yep. There's something that's been boring.
Nice. There's something that's been boring on Facebook that they can't log in.
Is it Jim?
No.
He told me he can't.
It's a woman.
Everything that.
Look at all this modern stuff.
KS, I don't know who KS would be.
Was it Foster?
Oh.
Because she did sign in actually at 4:15.
Okay. Could, could be, that's probably what it, that Foster.
Yeah. KS, she used to be a secretary. Yeah. Wasn't she, didn't she work?
No, that was.
Can she call?
That was Sue. Okay.
Can she call?
I don't, uh, Jerry's going to be in a conversation.
What's the hiatus for? Are you all trying to get who that person is?
Yep. I mean, if we wanted to take a five-minute recess, we can. While I try to get Jim connected and the person connected.
You're always like that five minutes, right? I know what you're doing too. Yeah.
We are actually just going through the different pages. Jay went through the overview that he gave, um, via email on Tuesday. So right now we are in the process of voting on, um, each of the sections of the budget. And we are starting with the personnel services and we are, uh, at the selectmen's budget. So there's the pages one and two.
Okay.
Okay. Um, and the changes here were, uh, reduction of all of the selectmen's stipends. Um, as you may have read in Jay's email, uh, the proposal is to reduce all of this. What's that, Jim?
I just talked to my wife.
Oh, okay. So we are, uh, reducing all of the stipends for all of the elected and appointed officials to $300. Um, and the chairs at $350. So that's the change on the selectmen's pages. Uh, so I do need a, uh, we've reviewed it. Um, and we are at the point where we're going to vote on that.
I'll make a motion to, uh, reduce the stipends of those in town government that received them.
You could do that or you could make a motion to approve the revised pages of the selectmen's budget as presented.
I'll resent, uh, my motion and I'll restate it, uh, as you just stated, as the chairman stated.
Okay. So I have a motion by Joe to, uh, approve the selectmen's budget as presented this evening. Do I have a second?
What's with it?
I have a second by Rick. Is there any discussion?
No.
Okay. Uh, now that we, uh, have somebody remoting in, it is a roll call vote. Joe?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And it is a yes from Christine. So that one is unanimous. That brings us next to the assessor's budget. Again, the changes were to the, um, part-time assessor positions who receive a stipend. So their stipends are now to $300. I believe that was the only change in the assessor's budget.
Correct.
And, uh, Madam Chair, what were theirs prior to 300?
Eighteen hundred.
Eighteen.
Eighteen hundred. Okay. Yep.
Yep. That was the one that had a lot of discussion.
Yep.
At the science meeting. So, um, I do need a motion to approve the assessor's, uh, personnel services budget as presented.
So.
I have a motion by Rick. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
All right.
I have a second by Jim. Any discussion?
Just one.
Yes.
That, uh, for the selectmen, I don't think any one of us is doing this for the $86.56.
Right. Right.
After tax, yeah. But in, for as far as the other ones, I think it will have to be due.
Going forward.
Going forward to be, because it's, and all our free boards and committees, it's tough to get people. And you don't know everybody's situation. Maybe some of these folks are doing it pretty extra, maybe $6,000.
That was, that was the, I mean, that was the discussion with the budget subcommittee and why we didn't reduce them to zero.
However, I, I am gonna make this statement, um, about it. When I was in law school and I lived in Chickikeye, I served on the Board of Water Commissioners for Chickikeye. Uh, I received no stipend, no pay. I served on the Chickikeye Comprehensive High School Building Commission. I received no stipend, no pay. I was on the City of Chickikeye Emergency Management Commission. We redid all of our emergency management rules, regulations, et cetera. A lot of hours responding to emergencies and things like that. I received, you know, no pay. That was just Chickikeye. That doesn't mean that's how Leansboro is or North Adams or Pittsfield. I think really going forward, we need to look at what is our microcosm here in the Brookshires, you know, look. Um, frankly, uh, we, I wouldn't even look at this had we not had that grand, you know, total, total number. Uh, so as I said before, I, you know, they tend to be to restore it, sure. Um, but we might be the only community doing it. When I sat on the Pittsfield Board of Health, both as a chairman and as a member, I received no, no stipend down at Pittsfield. Uh, I'm on the board of, I'm on the, excuse me, the airport commission in Pittsfield. No, no stipends are offered down there. So it, it needs a little bit more research, you know, for sure.
I can match that for boards over the years I've served on with no money either.
Okay.
Yeah. Most people don't, aren't doing this kind of thing for the.
I was actually confused by it. So, until it was Peter. When we were told that we had to set up, uh, direct deposits for like, for what? I don't understand. So, um, that kind of seemed as a shock to both of us. So, but I, I never. All right. So I have a motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, uh, roll call vote.
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Sure.
And it's a yes from Christine. So it's unanimous.
It's maybe kinda late, but have the assessors been made known of this change?
They will be notified after this meeting. All of them.
So they don't, didn't have any input into it?
I believe that all the department heads were informed, except that it's going forward.
Okay. Cause I didn't have any input and I just wonder if, um, so they're gonna get a letter not knowing this has happened?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We can't let them know that it's happened if it hasn't happened.
Okay. Well, that is a possibility. Should I have stated?
Yep. But department heads were informed, who work with the board. Um, and you were notified on Tuesday via email by the town administrator, who, after the budget subcommittee reviewed it. Um, registrar voters, pages thirty-nine and forty. Again, the changes are the stipends.
Those stipends before were six twenty-five for the chair, five twenty-five for the members, three hundred for the clerk. Line item reduction from nineteen seventy-five down to twelve fifty.
Make a motion to approve the personal services budget request for registrations.
I have a motion by Rick. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim. Any discussion?
Well, that registrations are registrars.
Registrar.
Okay. Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know. Yep.
Yep.
Yep. Thank you.
Put the header on this, says registrations per Mary's, um, system. Yep. So the second page it says it. So, uh, if there's no discussion, roll call vote.
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
It's a yes from Christine. So that is unanimous. With regard to inspection services, um, I cannot vote on this item. Um, I will just state that the reduction here, uh, would be the stipends that are paid to the board of health and hence why I cannot vote on this. Technically, I need to recuse myself. Um, but if you would like me to manage the roll call vote, I can do that. What is the board's comfort? If you would like me to leave the table, I'm happy to do so. But you just need someone to manage the technology for that case of time.
For registrations?
No, inspection services.
So the board of health, on page fifty-one of your detail page, you'll see board of health, elected and appointed, chairman, member and member. That line item has been reduced from four thousand eight hundred and three to one thousand four hundred and seventy-one.
Consider me fair to you. I'm sorry, we got it.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we approve the inspection services, uh, personal service budget that's requested.
Please, can you check, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Hey, Jim, ask for a roll call vote.
Can I have a roll call vote?
Yes. Joe, yes.
Rick, yes.
Rick?
Jim, yes.
One extension.
Christine abstains.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The, uh, police department budget, pages fifty-five and fifty-six. Um, and do you want to look at? Well, we'll talk about it. Um, so as Jay mentioned, the savings here was, uh, some retirement that we could not count on when we looked at the budget back in March, as paperwork was not filed. Um, and then hiring some, uh, more junior officers that helped, um, reduce this budget that you see before you. Or anything else?
No, the reduction was about, uh, from about one million seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand down to one million seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, give or take.
All right. Now, question on this, uh, we're still looking at one more police officer, right?
Correct.
So the, uh, money is in there for one more.
Correct. Yes. Is it say, I don't think it says, I don't think this pronounce as vacant. I think it's just listed as patrolman. Um, but yes, it's in there and it's budgeted mid-range as a step four, just in case we do hire somebody, have to hire. Part of the, the nuance of prediction on personnel services is to figure out where likely we would pay them within the pay scale. Cause if you under, if you shoot, you're gonna be over. So for something like this with a vacant position, hiring a lateral, we budgeted as a step four, uh, just in case.
Now, the reduction in the health concerns and Medicare mask, is that from existing folks?
Yes. From existing folks who, some folks may have changed insurance plans. Uh, for example, we had a few officers, again, we kinda lucked out. We had a few officers who chose to go on their spouse's insurance plan. So we were able to achieve some savings there. So all of that is, Mary has her magic spreadsheet. Does all the formula, all the calculation.
Um, on the insurance part of it, um, once they change over, that can't be changed in midstream. It's gotta go through the, a whole year when the, uh, person, uh, for instance, like if they change to the spouses and then all of a sudden the spouse says, geez, this isn't working out, can it go, okay.
Open and rolling.
Okay. Went open and rolling. Okay.
Yep. Yep.
So you can't do it in midstream, in other words. So you gotta think it out good when you do it. Okay.
Yep. I'll make a motion to approve the personal services budget request for the new board.
I have a motion by Rick. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion?
Just the discussion, we make out at this end of the, uh, equation, but as far as our retirement goes, that's gonna elevate because a lot of these officers, their retirement, had a lot of years of, of service. So that's something that kind of, gotta keep the eye on, our retirement. So.
Okay. Okay. Uh, so the roll call vote. Joe?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
It's a yes from Christine. So that's unanimous. That brings us to the council on aging, pages seventy-one and seventy-two for personnel services. The, uh, reductions here, uh, is, were explained was to, uh, reduce the four part-time van drivers to one full-time benefited van driver to help with, um, retention and a change in the per diem van drivers to help as needed. Anything else?
So the per, the per diem van driver lineup went from three to six thousand. We eliminated the four part-time positions, replaced with one and a grade five, step one entry level rate of sixteen sixty-one. That reduced the department personnel services for council on aging from two twenty-five, eight thirty-five to seventeen, seven twenty. That is all.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve personal services budget request for council on aging.
Okay. I have a motion by Rick. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I have a second by Jim. Any, uh, further discussion?
Yeah. Just quickly, I'm glad to see this change because I had brought up many times, like it seemed like every week we're getting a new van driver. And I think elderly people like the reassurance that they know who they're gonna be stepping on the van when, when they're going to their stocks. So I'm glad to see that. I think it's a great change.
I appreciate Jay's work on that to, uh, get a little bit more creative and figure our way to increase retention, uh, which you've been trying to do in all of the departments. So, thank you. All right. There's no other discussion. Uh, roll call vote. Joe?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
It is a yes from Christine. Uh, that brings us to the library personnel services budget, uh, for pages seventy-seven and seventy-eight. Uh, Jay had explained to us that we've already realized savings, uh, with the library part-time staff, uh, who have been furloughed and I believe, uh, some of the other staff that has been furloughed.
Yes.
And so those savings were applied to the budget, uh, because we already know them and that's why this was changed.
Yes. You're showing a reduction on the personnel services line item from two eleven, three seventy-five down to two oh three, five eighty-seven. That simply reflects a reduction in the amount of hours, uh, not worked into fiscal twenty-one, which immediately realizes the savings.
I just have a statement on that. Um, I know that Eleanor, uh, what is it?
Gorlack.
Gorlack, right. She's very well educated. She's a great addition. But I didn't say it, but I can say it now that a lot of the people had a lot more seniority than she did that had been furloughed and had put a lot of time in the library. And for some respects, they seem to me have been, have been flighted just a little bit.
I think it probably depended on their function in the library and so whether or not they were furloughed. That was my understanding.
Yep.
And not necessarily about seniority.
That is correct.
Okay.
Um, do I have a motion with regard to the library's budget?
Make a motion to approve the personal services budget request for libraries.
I have a motion by Rick. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Jim. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Um, roll call vote. Joe?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Christine is a yes. So that is unanimous. That brings us to the Department of Public Work. Um, and this is pages ninety-six, ninety-eight. And the reductions here would be the cemetery commission, uh, stipends.
That's correct. The cemetery, uh, commission previously budgeted, chairman was $600. The members were $500 apiece, carrying a light item of sixteen twenty-three. That's been reduced down to nine sixty-four. Those are the only changes on that sheet.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the personal services budget request for highway.
I have a motion by Rick. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Um, any discussion?
Yeah, that reduction.
Yep.
Now, is that gonna affect, uh, like Memorial Day and stuff, uh, thing up the cemeteries?
I don't believe so. There's just a stipend for the cemetery commissioners.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Uh, so it is a roll call vote. Joe?
Yes.
Uh, Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Okay. So it's a yes from Christine. Sorry. So that one is approved. That brings us to, um, the public buildings. So it's under operating expenses. This would be public buildings and property. this would be public buildings and property maintenance where we saw some, uh, savings with the solar panels, uh, in previous year, and so this was reduced by ten thousand dollars to, um, those actual savings. Okay. Um, so I do need a motion on that.
What would the motion have to be?
To approve the operating expenses budget sheet for built, public building and property maintenance.
I'll, I'll second what was stated by the chairman.
Thank you for making that motion. Thank you, Joe, do I have a second?
I'll start.
I have a second by Rick, roll call vote, Joe?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
It is a yes from Christine. That, um, so those are all the changes to the budget. Um, I know that many of us had stated, you know, that Jay and Mary had done some, uh, great work to find some ways to cut the budget, um, knowing it wasn't gonna be easy, but they were able to do so without losing any decisions, um, and not cutting any services. So I commend the work, um, that you guys did in sharpening your pencils, uh, over the last couple of weeks to get this, to this point. Um, just a, a, another statement, this will go to the finance committee, they are scheduled to meet on Monday at five P.M. Um, Chairman Verdic joins, um, John and myself for the budget subcommittee meeting on Tuesday, so he was, uh, aware of the discussions that were, um, being had and these pages, um, he had seen. Um, he didn't see them finalized, but he did know kind of where things were gonna be at. So he is working with the finance committee for their meeting on Monday. Uh, this will be part of the warrant articles that will be before the Board of Selectmen next Wednesday. Um, so we will go through that and then the finance committee will meet next Thursday to look at the warrants as well.
Just a quick question on the finance committee, are they stipend?
They are not.
Okay, just wanted to know, I wasn't sure.
Yep, no, we actually have questions that are not, um, and that one, I was surprised was not. Um, okay, so that's everything on the budget. That gets us in good shape to continue on with the town meeting for September twenty-fourth, which we're still working on the logistics for. Um, that's moving along nicely. So that concludes what's under new business, we do have an executive session that is scheduled here. Um, Jay, are you good with that?
Oh, yeah, I'm pretty sure.
Okay, so I do need a, a motion to go into executive session, uh, for reason number six, to consider the purchase exchange lease for value of real property. I have a...
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion by Rick, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Jim, um, it is a roll call vote, Joe? Uh, Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
It's a yes from Christine, and we'll end the Zoom meeting.